Hello, my name is Sue Smerek and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, Washtenaw County. Welcome to our online candidate forum for the November 8th general election. The League is a nonpartisan nonprofit organization that promotes voter education, and we host candidate forums to help make voters make informed choices. Now, let's hear from the candidates.
Thank you, Sue. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Smerek and I will moderate the forum tonight. It's my honor to introduce four of the 13 candidates running for the Ann Arbor School Board. Lena Kaufman, Susan Ward Schmidt, Andrew Spencer, and Leslie Wilkins. The League will conduct a total of three forums in which 12 of the 13 candidates for the Ann Arbor School Board have agreed to participate. Candidate Paulette Metoyer was invited to participate, but was not available to participate in any forum. Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum. We're now ready for your opening statements. Ms. Kaufman, will we have your opening statement, ma'am?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Lena Kaufman, and I'm, first of all, a mom of three wonderful children in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. I'm also a working parent and a resident in our community for over a decade. Professionally, I'm a writer, serving healthcare systems and physician groups. The reason I'm running for Ann Arbor School Board is that I grew deeply worried about the district's response to the pandemic and the harm caused by the extended period of school closure with virtual-only learning. Enrollment went down significantly last year, and although it looks like we may have gained some of that enrollment back, we're far from out of the woods. Because per pupil funding is how we pay our teachers and staff, it is essential that we maintain good enrollment. Teacher pay rose just 1% this upcoming school year, not even keeping ahead of inflation, and burnout is a serious concern with many leaving the profession. Worst of all, metrics on student learning show that many students have fallen behind their peers with long periods of virtual learning. This is especially so for low-income minority and immigrant students.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. And now, Ms. Schmidt, may we have your opening statement?
Good evening. My name is Susan Schmidt. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for doing this panel. It really helps the voters, I think, know who they're voting for. I'm a lifelong educator that has advocated for children my entire life. I have worked with students from kindergarten through community college level, many of them with learning disabilities. In my past, I was a former school board member in East Lansing and the president of that board, and have worked over since my retirement years. I've been working at the state level, working on literacy and issues with dyslexia. I believe that I bring experience and boardsmanship skills that can help our board be more productive and to make sure that we guarantee a solid public education for each and every child at the very best. And I look forward to hearing what all of my fellow candidates are going to talk about this evening, and I hope that I help the voters make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. And now, we're ready for your opening statement, Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, Jeff. My wife wanted to make sure I mentioned that the League of Women Voters voter guides are her absolute favorite part of election season. My name's Andy Spencer. I go by Andrew Spencer on the ballot. I live here in Ann Arbor, and I work as a scientist studying new ways to treat rare diseases. My education includes a bachelor's degree in chemistry and a PhD in biochemistry. My wife is a pediatrician here in town at the University of Michigan in the Adolescent Medicine Division, and we have two boys attending 6th and 10th grade within Ann Arbor Public Schools. I'm running because I want Ann Arbor Public Schools to be a great place for teachers to work, for all students to learn and achieve, and for people to build community. One of the things that nudged me into the race was in February 2021, the MEA, Michigan Teachers Association, at the state level did a survey, and they found that Washtenaw County teachers were about 40 percentage points below average in terms of their vaccination rate, and it wasn't because they didn't want to get vaccinated. There was a problem, and I can maybe talk more about that later, since I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. And finally, may we have your opening statement, Ms. Wilkins?
Good evening. I'm Leslie Wilkins. I'm thrilled to be here. I'm a qualified, calm, compassionate, and thoughtful, long-term Ann Arbor Public School parent. This serving on the Ann Arbor School Board has been on my heart for a long time now. This is not a knee-jerk reaction. Eight years ago, I intended an informational session, and afterward, a friend of mine suggested I start volunteering with PTO boards at my schools, my kids' schools. So that's what I did, working at the elementary school for two years on the board, and then at Scarlet Middle School PTO for five years, where I served as vice president for three years. I really enjoyed the work I did on the PTO boards, advocating for students and teachers. Now, I'm excited to take the next step to serve in a way that impacts students district-wide. I want to ensure the district prioritizes success and happiness for all students, and that all families are heard.
Thank you, and thank you all, the candidates, for your opening statements. We will now move on to the questions. We will start with Ms. Schmidt for the first question. Ms. Schmidt, what are your top two priorities if elected?
Great question. One of the things that I think probably the biggest priority we should have is making sure that we're going to create a school district where every student feels valued. And I will expand it beyond that to make sure every member of the learning community feels valued. No matter, you know, what kind of family you come from, what income level, whatever it is, every student should feel like when they come to school that that is a safe haven and that is a place of possibility. The second thing that I think is very important is for us to look at literacy rates. We know that the foundational skills that are established with our young learners totally impacts what goes on for the trajectory of their schooling. So that is something that I want us to look at, both math and reading literacy rates. And that's where I hope to draw some light to, as I'm serving on the board.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Mr. Spencer, same question to you, sir.
Two of my top two priorities. Yeah, my top two priorities are related to teachers and PTOs, and let me explain. I think teachers have gotten a raw deal, especially over the last 20 years, especially in this state, and it's not because of, you know, by accident. It's been on purpose. And so I think our district should be leaders in terms of making concrete steps to have a better deal for teachers. That's one thing that's important for me. I'm talking about total compensation and the whole job. The second thing that I will like to prioritize as a board member involves making PTO funding more equitable across our district. It's very uneven based on which families, which parents go to which school, and there's quite a bit of inequity as you look across the district and different schools. So I think some creative solutions need cooperation between the board and the PTOs to make that a better shake for all the schools in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Ms. Wilkins, same question to you, ma'am.
My two top things would be equity and emotional learning, social-emotional learning. As a single mom with a full-time job outside the home, I've experienced firsthand the frustration of not having time or resources that other families have to be the squeaky wheel to get their students' needs met. I want to make sure that all students, all families, and all communities are considered and consulted when important decisions are made. And social-emotional learning needs to be a top priority for all grade levels, and mental health resources need to be more readily available to students. One thing that reinforces positive mental health is representation. Students need to see aspects of themselves celebrated and reflected in curriculum materials and classroom and extracurricular activities. This is especially crucial to the mental health of BIPOC and LGBTQIA students. Also, access to the arts reinforces positive mental health.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. And Ms. Kaufman, same question to you, ma'am.
My first priority would be addressing what happened to learning for our children during the pandemic. We've had a historic problem in Ann Arbor Public Schools with lesser outcomes for students that are low-income, that are minority, that have other learning challenges. And we poured gasoline on this problem during the pandemic by keeping school virtual for so long and keeping kids out of learning. We need to get really serious about addressing the difference in learning outcomes between different groups of students in our district, and that includes literacy, of course. The other issue that I think we need to look at is how our schools serve the greater community and serve working parents. The cut to childcare in our district has been really difficult for parents of younger children who are trying to get back to work, who are trying to just know reliably that their kids will be safe after school. I grew up a kid, an immigrant, that learned English in a public school, and if I had gone through the pandemic, I think my life would have been completely different because I would not have been able to catch up on the system that we have in place now.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Mr. Spencer, you get the first of the next question, which is, what should the Ann Arbor Public Schools do to address the student learning loss that occurred during COVID?
Yeah, that's a critically important question, as Lena laid out. You know, I think the experts on how to recover from that are going to be the people who are the experts on how to improve education. And so, you know, I think we have a lot of fantastic educators in our school, and it's going to be teaching technique. It's going to be teaching not to attest, but to improve people over time. And so, I personally, as a board member, am going to look to the experts in our district, which who are the educators, to, you know, prioritize how to do that. It needs to be an absolute priority, and I think it is a priority. That's why APS made sure they were in person last year, which I appreciated as a parent because the year off was very, very difficult for a lot of people for a lot of reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Ms. Wilkins, same question to you, ma'am.
Again, academic achievement levels are going to improve once all students feel welcome and included as they are, without expectation that they need to change to fit some kind of mold. So students will succeed when they feel valued and important. There is some catch-up that needs to happen after the pandemic, but it's always been the case that students are going to be most successful when they feel safe and valued in the classroom. This question brings up another concern of mine, which is, these days, the monitoring of how the success of the students or the not-so-success of the students, the monitoring of that comes in the form of standardized testing, of which I'm not a fan. And I understand that monitoring needs to take place, but I'd like to see some innovative thinking around different ways to measure that performance and have it not so reliant and reflecting on then teacher performance, which doesn't relate to the tests as people think it does.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. And now, Ms. Kaufman, same question to you.
I want to sort of piggyback a little bit off of what Andrew said. We need to look to the experts, but a lot of this is known science, that what works is high-intensity tutoring, having children in-person with teachers, trained tutors, that can give them the intensive support that they need. It's frustrating because we are a well-resourced district. In many ways, we have bond funding, and during the pandemic, we'd received a large share of ESAR funding. But when it came to the summer, in-person learning for elementary-age children was only by invite, and it was only for a small group, and it was only held at one school, and there was no busing, and the kids received between 10 days, nine days, if they were in the segment that was over the Fourth of July holiday. How do you catch up from what happened to them with nine days of summer school in person? And technology will be a part of our moving forward. There's great resources, but too often, because it's very difficult to staff, we fall back on, well, let's give them an app. Let's give them another Chromebook. We get Chromebooks for kindergarten students and pre-K. And I think we need to get, in some ways, back to basics of it's in-person. It's that great teacher touching the mind of the child and inspiring them to learn.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. And Ms. Schmidt, same question to you.
Sure. So, over my teaching career, we have seen achievement gaps with income levels. This is a very common problem, and of course, as we saw during the pandemic, it really exposed how serious it is. And in a district like Ann Arbor, that I think a lot of people perceive as everyone's high achieving, everyone is financially set, that is not the case. My final years before I retired, I was at Scarlet Middle School. And I know that in order to make a difference in that gap, there are few things that we need. Number one, we need to make sure we have highly qualified teachers. This is a challenge. Right now, this is a very difficult time for schools across the country. Many people are leaving their profession. We are not seeing people going into the profession. And so I think this district needs to focus on how they will recruit and retain highly qualified teachers because they do the work. The second thing is making sure that those teachers have evidence-based training on some of these areas where we need to shore up help for kids, and that it's truly based, it's peer-reviewed research. This is not what the textbook company tells you works, but really that we're looking at the science of if it is going to be effective. Thirdly, we need to make sure that when we do testing, that it's relevant, that the instructional time that we're stealing away from kids to do testing, that it has to be, give us information that's going to help inform practice. And finally, no learning happens if a child doesn't feel safe and secure in their classroom. And when I was a teacher over many years, all these years, I wanted my student to feel like they could raise their hand and make an error, that they knew that this was a comfortable place for them and that there were possibilities they would find as far as learning. And I think that we continually need to support the social-emotional things for children in the schools, or we won't see those children being able to take advantage of all the great things that we do.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Now, Ms. Wilkins, you get the first of the next question. School teachers have been on the front lines during the COVID pandemic, and news media report that teachers are overwhelmed and depressed. What specific steps should Ann Arbor Public Schools take to support its teachers?
Number one, money. Better pay. I mean, money doesn't buy happiness, but it's certainly going to, better pay is going to help those teachers. The next thing is trusting the teachers to be the excellent educators that they are and giving them the autonomy in the classroom to teach the way that they've learned and the expertise that they've developed in these different subjects, giving them the autonomy to teach the way they want to. Thirdly, there needs to be a better way for teachers to communicate their needs. So rather than just GoFundMe pages at the beginning of the year for school supplies or surveys that go out, and, you know, teachers are so overwhelmed with everything else they're doing, they don't have time to do a survey to say how they're feeling about things and how the beginning of school's going for them and things like that. There needs to be an intentional way to hear from those teachers and other staff and make sure that they're getting their needs met.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Ms. Kaufman, same question to you, ma'am.
It's an excellent question. I will echo a lot of what Leslie said. Income is, of course, important, and it's tied to us keeping up our levels of enrollment, which is tied to the whole picture. So it's a big picture problem, but it's also a small zeroing in on what's happening in our schools. I'm a healthcare communicator. We spend a lot of time talking about burnout among physicians and nurses and studying what are the factors in burnout. And it's not that it's a hard profession. It's often that if they're in a situation where they feel that they can't do their best work. And I see that sometimes in our Ann Arbor Public Schools teachers. When I go out and I actually meet and talk with them, which is something I think our board needs to do more of. They have not visited a school in over two years. When we talk with people, we often find out the little things that they need to do their jobs better, to feel safe in school. I spoke with a teacher two days ago who said she didn't quite feel safe because the district was no longer giving her enough masks and cleaning supplies for her room. It's such a simple fix, you know? But when people feel listened to and valued, it helps even in very hard-working situations. And we also need to address staffing. When there's not enough staff in a building, when people are covering for each other all the time, that's a surefire recipe for burnout and quitting.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. And Ms. Schmidt, same question to you, ma'am.
Sure. So, having been in the teaching ranks and been in the teaching ranks in this district, I know things that will help what's happening in the classroom. Number one, teachers want to have a voice in decision-making. We have chosen this as our profession, and we know that when we are tapped to answer the questions of why this or that isn't working, it means an awful lot to us because our goal is to see student success. That's why we chose to do this job. I think teachers appreciate flexibility in their day, as much as it can be granted. The other thing is access to high-quality training. We all know, perhaps in your jobs, you've been to professional learning, that you just think, my goodness, what a waste of time that was. I've worked for the last three years in the legislature to make sure that we have funding statewide for teachers to get evidence-based training in reading instruction and working with children that have characteristics of dyslexia. Teachers are so excited about this training because somebody is giving them something that will actually empower them to do better for children. Another thing is time for planning. Teachers really gain a lot when they do peer-to-peer mentoring and helping each other, whether it's me as a second-grade teacher working with a third-grade teacher because I'll be sending my students on up to that grade, or someone teaches the same grade as me. So ways that we can bring our teachers together. Everyone always mentions what we make, as far as what teachers make, as far as their salaries. And of course, people have to pay their bills. But coming to work every day in a positive environment where people value our opinions as professionals and giving us the tools that we need so we can be successful is so important. I mean, we want to feel gratified and see our students just blossom. So those are some of the things that I think a board can have some impact on, and I hope to do that if I'm elected to the Ann Arbor School Board.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Mr. Spencer, same question to you, sir.
Yeah, thanks for asking the question. I think it's very important that we, as I mentioned earlier, make the deal better that we have with our teachers and our community. And our district, if anyone can make a better deal for teachers financially and job description-wise, it's us. I was raised by teachers. My mom and dad spent their entire lives as Michigan public school educators. So did my brother. And so I've heard over my dinner table and to this day, how things have changed slowly but inexorably for teachers. And there's a lot more busy work that isn't necessarily going to help a student learn, but it's going to help the teacher in the school district document that certain legislation was followed. I think in talking to teachers in Ann Arbor, one thing I've found that I think the board could really impact is when you talk about, you know, how are we going to follow the law? And to what extent are we going to teach to the test, as they say? There is some flexibility in how districts handle this. And from what I've heard, that the communication around this has not been ideal in Ann Arbor Public Schools the last few years, and there's a real opportunity to have a longer and more detailed discussion about that so that the burden that's increased over the last two decades for teachers in terms of day-to-day work is lessened. They can focus on the education, and we cut them a better deal from a total compensation and job description point of view. So that is how I feel about that issue. I'm very pleased to have the endorsement of the Ann Arbor Education Association, and I am looking forward to a chance, if I am lucky enough to be elected, to work with the board and the community to help make it a better deal in Ann Arbor for those teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Now, Ms. Kaufman, you get the first of the next question. The Board of Education's 2021 Student Enrollment Report indicates that the number of students in the Ann Arbor Public Schools has declined in each of the last three years. In the past two years, the most significant single reason for the decrease was transfer to private schools, according to the report. Does this pattern indicate a need for changes in the Ann Arbor Public Schools?
Well, I think it's no secret to anybody who's been watching closely why people left during the pandemic. I'm actually one of the parents that pulled her youngest child out of school because I had to work. I had two other older kids that I thought could learn virtually at home a little bit better. And the youngest child, we put in private school, which was a very difficult decision for me because it's something I never ever wanted for my child to be in a private school. I believe in public schools. But so many people were without choice. Public school is not a nice-to-have. It's a must-have. And parents need some basic things from their public schools in order to enroll their kids. They need good learning outcomes. They need to know the school will be reliably in-person. And they need to know if they have younger children, that before and after childcare is available to them. I know friends who would come back to Ann Arbor Public Schools if there was childcare at their school that was affordable for them so they could continue to work. These are simple things. These are things that our board needs to make top priority. And right now, there's big challenges in staffing. But other districts around us are managing, especially the childcare angle, a lot more service to the community than we are.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Ms. Schmidt, same question to you, ma'am.
Sure. I think one thing I keep in mind as I look at these kinds of numbers, we are the fifth-largest school district in the state. We are a district that has a wide diversity of students. I think that when decisions were made during the pandemic, you know, I am not going to second-guess those people because it's in the past, but the idea was to try to keep people safe. That was the concept. Perhaps that is the reason we lost some students. Here we are. The pandemic, we hope, is behind us. We hope never to have to relive that again. And I'm hoping we'll see some students come back. Related to the childcare, they're making moves to try to staff that. When you have a district this large, you have a bigger demand for employees. They went from 80 employees pre-pandemic. When they wanted to start it up again, only 20 came back. You know, they're working to, you know, get those different childcare programs up. I think it's absolutely necessary. We look at every way that we can think of to entice people to come back to the district. But I think the way that happens is the quality of the education, the quality of the support, the quality of the teachers, knowing we can staff the schools, making sure that we don't have long-term subs because that's always a huge problem. But, you know, we can't operate when our numbers are down. And as Lena has mentioned, we're at a per-pupil funding budget. And so we need to dig in and figure out, you know, what are the areas that we need to beef up? But a quality education with quality staff and the services for all children, I'm hoping will move us in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. And Mr. Spencer, same question to you, sir.
The biggest change I was looking for from the district during the pandemic The biggest change I was looking for from the district during the pandemic was a commitment to getting back to in-person school. I couldn't even get a board member or administrator to reach out to me. I mean, they did answer, they were busy. I didn't really expect them to reach out to me personally. I'm just saying, communicate that we are going to get back to in-person school until quite late in the game. And so some of the transparency around that was very challenging for, for parents. Some of the transparency around the, the risks around the before and after school care, when that started to get to wobble and become something that might not be able to be offered. Many parents felt that was a, a last minute decision on their, on their part because they had to find another plan. Those kids were still going somewhere. And I have a friend who's, who's the husband of a, of a teacher locally, who was trying to work from home, have his six-year-old do Zoom kindergarten and have a ten-year-old do fifth grade over Zoom. They couldn't just leave. They don't have the resources to just move. But that sort of thing was happening all over our district and it was incredibly challenging. So I think a commitment, one of the first things I list on my website is that we need to keep our kids in school whenever possible. That's a commitment I think we need to make. I would also like, and Susan brought up the challenge of how to do it because we've been knocked onto our heels a little bit with regard to before and aftercare. But a commitment to getting back to that would make a lot of families' lives in our district better. And that translates to happier kids and hopefully better educated kids. Because all that, that, that stress around trying to do all of that was very, very difficult for a lot of people to, to deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. And Ms. Wilkins, same question to you, ma'am.
Oh, there's lots of really good stuff that's already been said by the time we get to the fourth person here. I do just want to point out that enrollment did decrease over the last two years. But it was right in step with other districts, both in the Washtenaw County and also statewide. So it certainly wasn't an Ann Arbor only problem. And even the other districts in the county or the state who did do a lot more in-person learning, their enrollment suffered during the same time period. And I'm not by any, I'm not promoting. We, at my house, we were not fans of the remote learning either. So I, I do believe that in-person is the best learning. So I'm not promoting that at all. The, I think a lot of families did not have the resources to take the opportunity to go elsewhere. And it's those families that we kind of need to earn back their trust by what everyone is saying, making sure we've got top-notch educators still here for their kids to learn from. Making sure there's adequate childcare opportunities, making sure there's adequate transportation to get them here. That was another big issue during the pandemic. And then also again, making sure that it's a safe environment for their kids, no matter what community that they come from.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. And Mr. Schmidt, we're going to start you on the next question. Currently, masking is optional and welcomed across the district. What is your position on masking at the Ann Arbor Public Schools?
Sure. You know, I think that as I understand it, the, the policy that was put forth for the school district was to follow CDC guidelines on a county level. Looking at national statewide doesn't really apply because each county is looking at their own hospital admission rates, et cetera. I feel very comfortable in following the recommendations that come from the people that are looking at the scientific evidence and their recommendations. So if, you know, whatever the CDC county lines are saying, if they're saying, you know, this is a time where we're at a high rate and a mask indoors is the way to go, I would be on board with that. Of course, at any time, people can mask. Some people have described it as a mask-friendly school. If you have an all-accepting school where everyone feels valued, that would be part of it. If someone chooses to do that. So I will be looking towards the science on this. It will not be, and I know I've, I've talked with Andy about this, you know, it's not my opinion. It's what is the evidence that's going to have drive my decision?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Spencer, you have the next, the same question to you, please.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, on the topics, on the topic of public health mandates, whether they be masks, vaccines, remote learning, I believe the district's policy needs to be in line with the mandates implemented by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the local health department. Susan's right, the health department, local health department trumps. No pun intended, trumps the, the state. In my opinion, those public health experts are the ones that are charged with and have access to the right information to make those decisions. And so I've pledged to people that if I'm elected, I am not going to vote. If it comes to a vote, I'm not going to vote for a more restrictive or a less restrictive mandate than those implemented by the local health department. Current Michigan law, as I understand it, you can't have a less restrictive rule for your district than the mandates put in place by the health department. If the health department mandates a particular thing, you, in my, in my understanding and talking to lawyers and a couple of superintendents, that is, that is what you do. But the, the specific policies in place have, there's a little bit of flexibility around that unless there's a mask mandate. So I'm, I'm following the health department like Susan.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Ms. Wilkins, same question to you, ma'am.
Thanks. In the past, I supported the district's decisions to prioritize the health of the whole community, which in turn protected the physical and mental health of our students and staff. I wasn't as worried about a student getting COVID as I was about a student spreading COVID to a grandparent and feeling guilty about it for forever. So I was glad to see Ann Arbor Schools set the high bar of erring on the side of caution rather than simply following what other districts were doing. This new policy where masks are only recommended rather than required was based, as I, as far as I understand, not only on county-specific data, but also district-specific data based on staffing and cases among the staff and students. I think again, they've taken into account the mental health of students by giving autonomy back to families, allowing parents and caregivers to help students make choices based on how comfortable they are returning to quote-unquote "normal" and returning to the rich away, array of ways students can learn and socialize and express themselves artistically. Me personally, I'm, my family wears masks. I've asked my daughter to wear a mask here on high school. And again, I'll agree with the other candidates here is following the experts and what they've recommended and trusting that the school district is following that expert advice as well.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. And Ms. Kaufman, same question to you, ma'am.
I very much agree with the other candidates here. It's, it is a very difficult and highly politicized issue, however. And I was with my son while he was not in, in public school. He wasn't a school that was mask optional at a time when everyone else was masked. And I remember the anxiety. I have such great sympathy and feelings to my friends who are feeling the anxiety that I felt a year ago with, with my son in school, you know, about how would this go, you know? And it is, it's okay. My experience was that it didn't seem to have made a big difference either way on cases, unfortunately. But we do need as a district and as a board to maybe be more public with the community about the reasons. When we set policy that's separate from the health department, it's not just that, you know, that we are being extra. We also have to think about the whole logistics of that. And, you know, who's going to be enforcing the mandate in the school? That's putting another burden on our teachers, you know, who didn't sign up for that originally. And it can put, if we set policy that's different than the state health department, it can put our, our school district in court because there are groups that would very much like to sue us if we do a mask mandate because of the political nature.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. And now we come to the last question for everybody this evening. And we'll start with Mr. Spencer for the first of this last question. According to the superintendent's back-to-school report for the 2022-23 school year, Ann Arbor Public Schools suffers from a staffing shortage despite extraordinary efforts to hire, especially in the areas of special education, para-pros, and school counselors. What innovative strategies could Ann Arbor Public Schools use to address this shortage?
I think one of the things that I've seen work in other states that I've lived in, I've been a bit of a nomad and lived in eight different states, but I'm a Michigan native. I've lived here the majority of, of all that time, is to use co-op. That is parent co-op or community co-op or titer-y co-op models to help staff things. That would help a couple like my wife and I who both work full-time and can't, we can't commit twenty hours a week, every week for an entire school year, but we can commit for X number of hours. And there are amazing camps and daycares in Silicon Valley where I grew up professionally that have an amazing system using a mathematical model of where the kids are going to need counselors and, and childcare at various ways to, to the point where if you sign up for that particular camp, they have about ten locations in, in the Bay Area. You can, you can just drop your kid off at any place and there's coverage because they understand the math of the entire situation. So I think it's a real big challenge. Dr. Swift has had to spend a huge amount of time on that, which is the reality during the pandemic. But it is very, very important. So I think you asked about innovative solutions. Non-innovative solutions include paying more, but I think an innovative solution that would be new to Ann Arbor is a co-op or co-op-like model where we can get a lot of people to commit hours as they can. And we may need help from that, from, from the powers that be at the state. The last few seconds, I'm just going to go back to the previous question to say how thankful I am that people in Ann Arbor and Washtenaw County have gotten vaccinated. If you look at the data now, if you look at people sixty-five and older who are at most risk for bad outcomes with COVID, in our county, ninety-nine point six percent and more are vaccinated. That is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. And Ms. Wilkins, same question to you, ma'am.
I don't, I really like Andy's suggestion as far as the innovative. I've heard of that being successful in other states as well. I don't have any innovative ideas myself. But we have, we, the Ann Arbor Public Schools have all these partnerships with other education organizations and University of Michigan, Eastern Michigan University, all these top thinkers about exactly this thing. And I think more time needs to be spent with those experts at those different partner organizations to get some innovative ideas from them and then implement them and test them and ask the families, would this work? Take some of these ideas, run them past families in different communities, different lifestyles. Ask, is this something that would actually work for you? And then work on implementing those different programs. And then again, things like not only teach, raising teacher pay, but we have a problem retaining our excellent educators. We're still a very attractive school district. Everybody wants to come to Ann Arbor Schools as a teacher, but we're losing them after a couple of years. And we're losing them to the other professions, but we're also losing them to other school districts. And there needs to be some kind of system in place, retention bonuses, something like that to keep our teachers here in the district.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. And Ms. Kaufman, same question to you, ma'am.
It is a difficult tourney problem and one of the things that sort of caught us a little bit flat-footed being what this Michigan's sixth-largest district and known as sort of a destination district for teachers in their career. We were used to, you know, just having our pick and our choice of great teachers who wanted to come here. And then the pandemic happened, happened and the landscape shifted. I've spoken with teachers who's picked another district to get, to get hired into during the pandemic because they said, I applied at AAPS and the process just took so long and the communication was terrible. You have to pay money upfront to, even to be a substitute at a fairly low rate to do your own background checks. I had a neighbor who applied to be a substitute and the whole process was so onerous that once she finally got into school, they had, no one had thought to make sure that she had access to the learning system that the kids use that's now online and you have to have, you have a sign-in to get into. No one had thought to think through that. The whole hiring process could have run more better during the pandemic. And I know we have a new HR director and I'm hoping for some great things, but the board needs to be the, the agency that stays on top of that for the community and makes sure that the things that are happening to make us really good at hiring people are indeed what are, what's happening.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. And Ms. Schmidt, same question to you, ma'am.
Yes, you know, I've been in this profession for many years and we saw this shortage coming. I was at the end of the baby boomer generation and we saw, we knew that when that group, and I retired in 2019 from the K-12 classroom, we knew when that group retired, there was going to be a shortage. You added the, the pandemic and the virtual component of teaching, which is not very rewarding for teachers. A lot of teachers just said, I'm, I'm done. I think a couple of things that can help that are somewhat innovative, although whether it's innovative, it's things that, you know, we haven't tried. One is looking at having teachers be able to do halftime and trying to match up halftime positions. This is usually something districts don't want to get into, but I think especially for our younger teachers when they start to have children, you know, it's that, it's getting to be so much of a tough job. Maybe I'll just stay home for a few years. If we give them that flexibility, I did that in the early parts of my career. And I found it to be, I was able to stay in and continue to teach. Another one is trying to think about, they do this at Eastern Michigan where they're looking at people currently in the school district as paraprofessionals in different jobs like that. And they're trying to give them access to college educations with reduced fees so that we can, they already know sort of what the school's about. And now we'll make it possible for them to become certified teachers, which I think is another way to grow the, the population. Another one is how do we mentor our teachers coming in to the district as new employees? There is so much to learn when you come to a district for the first time. And I've moved to a couple of districts and I know even as a seasoned teacher, it's overwhelming. And so I think if we're doing an effective mentorship, but there needs to be continual work on this statewide and nationally, how we're going to beef up the number of teachers that are going to teach this generation of children and, and going forward, because it is a big problem.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt, and thank you all candidates for your excellent answers to the questions. We're going to move now to the closing statements. And now it's time for the closing statement. We'll begin with Ms. Kaufman. May we have your closing statement, ma'am?
I think that's election coming up may be one of the most important for Ann Arbor Public Schools in many, many election cycles. We have a huge amount of choice in candidates this year. And, but the, this time is so important. We are at a crossroads at a, as a district where we're looking at a future where it could be very technology-driven, very much with children on laptops in school every day. Very much teachers tracking every little data metric that their kids are delivering as far as learning. Or we can go in a direction where it's more about the people in our building, about our students, about science and the evidence of what works for addressing disparities and learning outcomes. Science and the evidence of what works for addressing disparities and learning outcomes. For making children love school and for building a great next generation for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Ms. Schmidt, may we have your closing statement, ma'am?
Yes, this will be an important decision and I am asking the voters to um. To give me a chance to be on the board here for the Ann Arbor Schools. I believe my experience as an educator over a lifetime, my experience working on boards, which. Uh, I believe I have the collaborative skills to work with my colleagues. And my energy and the the dedication that it takes to really do a good job on the school board. I think that's something that we haven't really talked about tonight, but. There is a lot of preparatory work before you go into meetings. Um, and time talking to your, the members of your community that help you make decisions. I think we need to renew and reimagine the mission that we have. Just like I did every year when I come back to my classroom, I would think about how am I going to do this better? What are ways that I can innovate? What are ways I want to get rid of that didn't work? And so I hope that the voters will give me the opportunity to bring the experience I have to the Ann Arbor School Board. Uh, to make it the best district for every child um that we educate.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. And Mr. Spencer, may we have your closing statement, sir?
Yes, thank you so much for for having me here. Um. Just to summarize some of the things I've talked about today, um, I was raised by teachers. I counted it up, my family, my immediate family, as um. As students and teachers and principals and superintendents collectively, we have over a hundred and thirty-five years of experience. So this is the dinner table conversation. That I've been having my whole life. And um, I love it. I pay attention to board meetings, even if I'm not on the board. But I'm also raring to get on the board and really do the hard work and it is hard um to to help our district. Um. I mentioned I was, I was endorsed by the local, local teachers union. That's very um. Point of pride for me. I've also been endorsed by a a national science policy organization called Three Fourteen Action. They have a mission to elect more scientists to office. So just to summarize, my my priorities, before and after school care is a priority. Uh, teachers need to love being at Ann Arbor Public Schools and want to stay. We want to keep our kids in school whenever possible, find creative ways to make PTO funding more equitable across the district. Um, we need to make further progress. We've actually made quite a bit of progress reducing the number of days. Uh, kids miss due to disciplinary action. We need to continue that. And then what we've not talked about much at all today is let's optimize the very positive impact, the opportunity we have to make a huge impact. On our schools for our kids and teachers through the twenty nineteen bond. Uh, there's a lot more work to do there and that's like a critical. Critical area of uh of 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 quality that we can add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. And Ms. Wilkins, may we have your closing statement?
Just wanted to thank you again for this opportunity. Uh, the League of Women Voters Guide is always my go-to one for the. Uh, choosing my candidates each time. So I I do appreciate that you take all this time and put together those guides. Uh, I want to reiterate that um what I want to do is use my business sense, analytical skills. Team player attitude and life experiences to have a positive impact so students can thrive. Uh, and again, I want to make sure that all students, all families and all communities are considered when important policy decisions are made. I want to see an intentional, structured method of seeking out issues that are most critical to families. And making sure those issues are addressed by the school board. Thanks.
The league thanks the candidates and volunteers who participated in this forum. As well as the community members who submitted questions. Please urge others to view our forums. Most importantly, please vote in the November eighth. General election, either by absentee ballot or in person. And good night.